Actually, the worst of it hasn't hit us yet.
I'm gonna go really quick here on these last ones.
Okay, we are live and recording.
All right, bring us back.
We just realized that if we don't press power on our computers, they don't turn back on, so just give us a minute or two.
Fair enough.
You can go ahead.
Okay.
I'll make a motion then we resume our meeting.
A motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Mr. Usherwood, all in favor. Not sure the verbiage was correct there, but the spirit and intent is certainly accurate.
To finish out where we ended with the blue category, which is still our high needs, again, not listed in a specific order, the last item we were talking about was is now we do believe that the post-road widening has been, is starting to move forward to where we need to put some money in there to realign the Vickery Elementary and Middle School front entrances. This was put back in the 2015 SPOSS and bonds, but the post-road widening got delayed, so we, but now we believe through the county and telling us where they are in post-road, we think it's time to put that amount back in. All right, before we go into gold, are we okay with everything in the red and the blue? All right, again, one final reminder, the gold is, these are things that we still feel are a priority, but again, based on we have to wait to see how that revenue comes, but as Dr. Young has said, that things may change, our needs may change, and we may move something from gold up into the red and blue. We just had to categorize things the way we felt as they are today. The Cold Mountain addition is one on the future needs. This, again, continue to absorb continued growth. This also matters based on the first slide of the new elementary school about where that relief could come from. So again, this is something that if we can't relieve too much, this is another item we can do. More CGAE refresh their equipment and materials, more HVAC life cycle replacement, a maintenance facility due to the limited space and limited acreage. We're currently located on 20, and we have outgrown that space. Again, this is way down the list. I would, anything school-based will absolutely come first. Anything based for curriculum and safety, that will all come first. This is just a need, that's why it's on this list, as well as the very last item that's, we always add in some type of inflation cost, because we all have no idea of a crystal ball of what's gonna happen. We put budgets together for these projects, but as we know, over five years, these things can change very drastically. And this is actually, again, going back to the color codes, this is what the principals have received. They took this from our leadership retreat, so they have a reference, and again, as you can see, it's color-coded, so they know how to decipher from the different projects, priorities, things of that nature, but this is just a summary sheet of what we reviewed. And then with the lights still on, I will be happy to answer any questions, clarifications, and go from there.
Matt, do you want to tell them what the dollar amount is?
Right now, we're projected to be, we're putting in our referendum just under $400 million dollars, over the five years for that collection. Currently in SPOSS six, we're set at 300 million, so we're, you know, looking at trend data. We don't make that number up just to add it. We do look at finance, we look at those trend data. We're also looking at our collections most recently, as we see them climb, so we're gonna put the referendum, I believe, is just shy of 400 million.
And Matt, I think it's also important to note, too, that a lot of those big projects that are front-loaded into this take a lot of money, so we may not see movement right at the beginning of a SPOSS collection period, because if we're gonna pay as we go, we've gotta accumulate that money before we can start.
And I want to be very clear, you bring up a good point. Once the referendum passes in November, which we're hoping for, we will come back together again and have more conversations with you as board members, Dr. Young, our cabinet, and we'll start looking at, okay, now we need to start laying out how these might, you know, be put out there. Do we go with safety right away? Do we go with the school? Do we do an addition? Because things will change from today through November, because we also pride ourselves about getting designs done well early enough, so the day we get the money enough to do it, we're ready to start building. We don't want to wait, get the money, then we start designing. We go ahead and do that on the front end.
So I just wanted you to address the one elementary school in the northwest side of the county. Currently, right now, Pools Mill has how many trailers?
They're adding two more. They'll have a total of 10 at the start of the school year.
That school's only about four years old, three years old?
Yes, sir.
And it's already has 10, four years old, it's already had 10 trailers?
Yes, sir.
Matt Elementary also has trailers?
10.
10 trailers?
Yes, sir.
And Sony Elementary?
12.
Okay, right there.
Cold Mountain?
Yeah. So that's a huge need for that elementary school.
Yes, sir.
And then I'll reserve my comments for the resolution on what I think about this SPOSS, so thank you.
Thank you.
Members, anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Work, for the exciting presentation.
Appreciate it. You turned the lights out. Yeah. Thank you all.
All right, that takes us to the action item portion of our agenda. First up is Dr. Amy Bartlett with policy JCDAF, use of electronic devices by students.
Well, good evening, it's great to be back. About a month ago, I stood here and shared with you our proposed policy related to the Distraction-Free Education Bill that's gone through our legislation, and this proposed policy would fit under JCDAF, which is use of electronic devices by students. As we know, this really impacts our governance goals related to social and emotional health, as well as the learner experience, and as we shared last month, we have been working on this all year long, and not to go back and be too redundant, but we have really been intentional about collecting stakeholder feedback along the way in many, many contexts and many forms. I think, Mr. Grimes, you mentioned earlier, local school council feedback. Dr. Young has been out to all of our schools to talk with our stakeholders, as well as our advisory committees, and that culminated with a town hall in April. And going into that town hall and right after that town hall, we did have a survey that went out. It was one of our largest responses that we've had in quite some time. From that survey, we heard from over 3,700 respondents, and from those results, we overwhelmingly heard strong support for restricting or limiting cellphone usage during the school day. There were comments in that feedback that really wanted to know what our plan was for contacting their children still during the school day, having some contingency pieces in place for that, and really overwhelmingly came forward, they wanted a balanced approach. While they see this as an issue, they felt like we just need to consider the whole context and have a balanced approach. So going into that, we came back to you last month and presented our proposed policy, which we'll get into. That has sat for 30 days, and during those 30 days, I want to present to you this evening, additional feedback that's come in in those 30 days. During this time, we have heard from an additional 298 respondents. You can see at the top there overwhelmingly 100% positive is 56% of the results. 166 of those comments supported the policy as is. What we classify as neutral feedback was 41%, and we'll get into that in just a little bit, and negative feedback was very, very limited, only 2% with seven responses in that classification. Some important things to note are the key themes identified. There was widespread recognition that there's negative impact on phones, on student focus and well-being. The pieces that came in, when we talk about the neutral feedback, you'll see highlighted there in yellow. They really want to see consistent enforcement across the board, across all of our schools, and very clear expectations, and not just for our students, but for our staff as well. That was a recurring theme through this feedback. There was a desire for transparency and ongoing communication through the implementation, so our parents saying, how are we going to very clearly message this out to our stakeholders into our community? And there was a bit of a mixed perception in that neutral feedback on a balance between complete restriction K-12 and limited access during specific times. As we'll get into, our legislation requires the complete restriction K-8, so the question was, in the 912 space, if we go with complete restriction bell-to-bell, or give that limited access during the specific time, which was in the proposal during the lunchtime. Also, there was a recognition of a need for very clear staff training and what the processes would be for handling when there were violations. So as a conclusion, we do feel that the stakeholder feedback reflected strong support for our policy, with most respondents aligned with our intent to create a more focused academic environment, and the comments suggesting thoughtful implementation guidance, flexibility and enforcement, and that especially came from those neutral respondents. So just as a reminder, this really is grounded and aligned, this policy with Georgia House Bill 340, which is our Distraction-Free Education Act. As we've talked about previously, this legislation does require those restrictions grade K through eight. Our policy is looking at what we want to do as a school system, not just in line with House Bill 340, but as a K-12 school system. So with that, I'm just going to revisit our proposed policy. You'll note tonight, this evening, it is the same as we presented in May with one slight addition, which will be highlighted in yellow on the next screen, but just as a review, we want to ensure distraction-free environments, limiting cellphones and personal electronic communication devices to ensure students can focus on their learning and engage in positive interactions to support their well-being. Our recommended guidelines for elementary and middle, in alignment with House Bill 340, is that all cellphones and personal electronic devices would be turned off and stored away during the bell-to-bell school day, and it is noted there that those restrictions do not apply to buses, bus stop, or school grounds before and after school. At the high school level, we're proposing that all devices and cellphones are turned off and stored away during bell-to-bell, with the exception that students may access those devices during their assigned lunch period, again, noting that these restrictions do not apply to the buses or school grounds before and after the bell-to-bell day. Here, we outlined the expectations that students must comply with those directives, or they may be subject to disciplinary actions in compliance with our code of conduct, and we also want to note that students should always respect privacy of others, and it encourages them not to take photos or videos of other students or staff members without prior approval. Additionally, it was important to note expectation in number three for our staff members as well, that our employees will be expected to model responsible use of their own cellphones and personal electronic devices. There is a portion in the proposed policy for students with disabilities and that may need other accommodations, specifically, we talk about our students that may be diabetic or have a need for those devices at times, and it's noted that a student that has an IEP or 504 plan or medical plan that explicitly mandates a use of that, that those provisions would be made. And notifications, we want to make sure that our parents and our guardians are informed of these policies and procedures related to this practice. The only addition to when we presented to you in May is highlighted in yellow at the bottom, and this is at the guidance of GSBA. Right now, they're in the process of putting out some exemplar statements that districts might want to consider in their policy, and this was one of those. We felt like our policy was pretty comprehensive, but this was a statement that we feel would be applicable and warranted to put in our policy, and that is, the district or individual schools within the district shall not assume any responsibility or liability for theft, loss, or damage to a personal electronic device. So again, that statement did come right from GSBA, and we thought that was very fitting to include that in our policy. So we are going to put that back to you, our Board of Education, this evening to discuss if we want to move forward with this proposed policy under Board Policy JCDAF. It's important to note that if this is approved by you, our Board of Education, our next steps will be outlined here, that we would develop a board regulation that supports that. Some of the things that come in place is what is stored and stored away mean. For example, we may indicate through regulation, it might not be on their person to be vibrating in their pocket, stored away may be in different places. That's the type of thing we would flesh out in regulation that would need to be done once a policy is developed. Additionally, staff handbook, we want to be very clear and consistent in our guidance to our employees here in Forsyth County on the expectations that they have for cellphones, as well as our code of conduct, our student and family engagement handbook, and certainly our communication plan. We heard that loud and clear from our parents, that we want a very clear communication plan. So once the policy you determine, if we would like to move forward with this or make any adjustments, these are the next steps, the pieces that will be working our cabinet. It's a collective effort from many departments, from school safety, technology, communications, teaching and learning, human resources, that we would be putting these next steps in place in all of these documents aligning to our board policy. So with that said, I turn it over to you to discuss how we would like to proceed forward with this proposed policy.
And just to be clear, the staff has been working on these already, so they've got a lot of these ready to go in the case that you do approve this, and Todd is sitting out there with two versions of the code of conduct that he'll present tonight, depending on how you vote with this. So with thanks to Amy and everybody and all the work they put into this, I would recommend for approval the proposed policy JCDAF to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Members, do we have a motion to approve proposed policy JCDAF? A motion by Mr. Usherwood, a second by Mr. Grimes. I'm gonna open it up now for discussion before the vote. I'll kick it off by saying thank you. I know that this has been a tireless effort for a long time. This didn't begin when the legislator took up the issue. We've been doing this well before. I appreciate that we found, I think, a balance. The high school question was more complex, but I think we have to consider that these kids are, lots of them are adults, and most of them are taller than me. I know that that's not a big accomplishment, but they are. They work, they have lives, you know, they're learning to be responsible and be functional adults in society, so allowing some, I think, latitude in the middle of the day where they're at their lunch, and they can connect with their necessities, their family, whatever it is, I think that makes a lot of sense. I know there was a lot of discussion in the community about that, but we have to remember that we're preparing young adults to be adults and to function in the world, so I think it's a fair balance. I just want to clarify that this includes all devices of all types, watches, iPads, laptops, everything, correct?
That is correct, and that will be very clearly notated in the regulation portion that supports the policy. But that is correct.
And I want to say thank you to Dr. Young. He's given us his assurances that through the documents you outlined, that would be appendices to this policy, that the enforcement will be paramount. You know, there's no sense in writing something on paper that we're not gonna follow, so I think that's the board expectation, and that's Dr. Young's expectation, so I thank the community. We've gotten, you know, nearly 4,000 bits of feedback between one thing and the other, which is a lot, and I think you guys have done a fantastic job, and I think, once again, we're leading the way on this, so thank you very much. Anything else, Chris?
That was pretty good.
Thank you, thank you. I worked on that all night. No?
I'll just say, I know that this was a huge undertaking, and it really feels as though, you know, as we started down this process, I know there was a lot of apprehension as, how's the community gonna react? But I think, based on the turnout at the town hall, the feedback you've received, even after this was put out for review, that there's overwhelming support. And I just want to say again, because this is being recorded, I hope the community understands it's not just enforcement within the schools, it's also enforcement and support within the homes. That's where it's gonna count, so.
Anything else? So I'll take the vote, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Bartlett.
Thank you.
Next up, Dr. Mitch Young with the East SPOSS referendum resolution.
And I am not going to read this, I just want it on display, and we sent it to you to have a look at and review, but based on the language we have here, I think it captures all that Matt so eloquently presented tonight, and you did a great job with that, Matt, I appreciate it. And I recommend for approval the resolution that we have before you, to put this to the voters in November.
Members, do we have a motion to adopt East SPOSS referendum resolution?
Make a motion that we adopt the East SPOSS referendum as presented.
A motion by Mr. Grimes, second by Mr. Usherwood. I'll open it up for discussion. I think, Mr. McCall, you had some things you wanted to share.
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, thank you to the work on this, and I know over the last couple of years, it's been a big shift in the way that we have done. SPOSS is in the past, and bonds in the past, and it's taken a lot of work for the staff to do that, so thank you for that. I believe this is an example what SPOSS should be. You know, it covers growth, and we're doing it debt-free. I don't know of any other school system in the state or even in the country, there might be, but I've looked, and I can't find that is doing this debt-free. And we can't collect impact fees, just because the state constitution doesn't allow it, and so this helps with the growth. And by being responsible, and we were talking about it earlier, you know, if we don't add bonds over the next couple of years, and we continue this financial, you know, stewardship, then the school system can be debt-free by 36. That's huge, to have a school system debt-free, oh, 38, sorry. He can make it 36 if he wants. 38. But I think that's a huge accomplishment, and this is exactly what SPOSS should be.
I'll just add to that and say, you know, I'm not a big fan of taxes, I don't know anyone that is, you know, but this is of all taxes, I would say, this type of consumption tax is the fairest type of tax. Most people don't know that 40% of this type of tax gets paid by people that don't live in the county, so if you're talking about a $400 million authorization, that's 160 million that you, as homeowners, are not paying for, people that don't live here are paying for. Most importantly, I think, not to sound like an echo, but it keeps us debt-free. Debt equals increased mileage rate, so this is an indirect way to lower your taxes on your home in a very meaningful way, where what the average consumer would contribute to this is not a lot. You would save a lot more by keeping your taxes low on your house. So this enables us to do that by staying debt-free. And I think, most importantly, it allows us to stay ahead, like we've been trying to do, and stay ahead of growth, while still being able to deliver high-performing instructional environments and safe schools. So I'm a big fan of this particular East SPOSS, and I'm ready to put it to the community and take their questions.
I was gonna say, I think, two things in here. I think, obviously, anything we can do to improve instruction, but I think, too, to keep our kids safe, you know, there's just a lot of changes going on, and I think, you know, the fact that, you know, we listed school safety number one, I think, is probably the most important, because keeping our kids safe in a safe environment, it's shown that they do better in school. So I think that is important, and also, you know, it's, there's several things in here for HVAC upgrades and things like that, and Matt could probably share the numbers, but, you know, with newer technology, it actually becomes cheaper to run our schools. We have big buildings, and with newer technology and newer, more modern HVAC equipment, Matt, I'm sure you could say, some of the HVAC is probably original to those schools, and so we're replacing, this would replace units and things like that that are, have a good bit of age on them, so it could be, you know, when you look at operating costs, it actually saves us money as well.
We also, just so you know, as a reference, is we do asset tag every single piece of equipment that's in this county, so we know how much we're spending on maintenance, repairs, parts, labor, so it kind of justifies as we're changing out these units. Yes, you're 100% correct, a lot of these units are original to their building. We maintain them very well, but this is time to move forward.
Thank you. All right, so if there's no more discussion, I'll go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor? Unanimous. Next up is policy EEC, food service records, with Dr. Mitch Young.
Both policy EEC, that's, well, I guess we need to do these separately. So EEC, there was no feedback, that's been out there for 30 days, none of the feedback would change my recommendation, so I would go ahead and recommend the adjustments to policy EEC.
Is there a motion to adopt a policy EEC food service records as presented?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Usherwood, a second by Mr. Grimes. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, there were no comments, or there were no comments?
I don't believe any comments, yet, I don't believe any comments came in at all, on either this one or the next one. Yeah.
Questions, comments? I'll go ahead and take the vote, all in favor? Unanimous. Next up is policy EEE Wellness Program, again with Dr. Young.
Yep, same, same thing. My recommendation is to approve the adjustments made to policy EEE.
Is there a motion to adopt policy EEE Wellness Program as presented?
Make a motion to adopt as presented.
A motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Mr. Usherwood. Is there any discussion? No? I'll go ahead and take the vote, all in favor? Unanimous. And next up is the 2025-2026 Code of Conduct with Mr. Todd Shirley, the man in black.
Make sure you have the right version now, Todd. Make sure you have the right version.
I moved it from where Suzie put it, so that I would know that I would open the right one. Okay. First of all, I do want to say thank you to the board for adopting the Distraction-Free Education Policy. It is my hope that a year from now, student support and school safety can stand in front of you and say that we have seen a decline in our threat assessments, and hopefully we can directly connect it to this. I'm not gonna go through the entire code of conduct that David presented for you again. I do want to show you the one change that we made, and it is based on your adopting the policy that was, the distraction-free policy. Basically, what we did is, under number 16, electronic entertainment, we eliminated the old verbiage, and we did a straight copy and paste of the policy that you have just adopted to give additional teeth to that. The statement that you see below that was already presented to you last month, which goes in line with the policy, just to reinforce, students are prohibited from using cellphones or any recording devices to record school officials or other students, because we have seen such a spike in that over the last few years. So with that, I would ask, or I would answer any questions, and I would ask Dr. Young if he would recommend to the board approval of the 2025-26 Code of Conduct.
I will, but I want to, on the record, promise Ms. Hoyes that Dr. Dugan is going through anything that we put out publicly, just to make sure we've got everything grammatically cleaned up and all that stuff, so I'm saying that publicly, that Dugan is on top of that with Mr. Shirley's team, correct?
That always goes through, yes, it goes through Dr. Dugan, and they, she has to reformat everything, we have to get it ready for printing, but it also goes through extra I's for everything.
And with that, I recommend for approval the changes to the 25-26 Code of Conduct.
Members, do we have a motion to adopt the changes to the 2025-26 Code of Conduct as presented?
I'll make the motion to adopt the changes to the Code of Conduct for the 25-26 school year.
A motion by Mr. McCall, second by Mr. Usherwood. Is there any discussion? No? All right, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Shirley. That brings us to the points of information on our agenda. Everybody should have received their documents. Any questions, comments, concerns? Here are none, we will move on to the public portion, the public participation portion of our agenda, and we have one speaker tonight, Mr. Jared Chrishell.
Our little buzzers now weren't so, if you want, I'll keep it, oh, did you find it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Times two. Thank you. Today is my 47th school board talk in a row. It would have been 48, but the first time I arrived, I didn't realize I had to sign up first. I regret to inform the board that I'll be missing our next meeting in July due to other conflicts, but when I come back, I'll try to run up a streak to at least 50. In my first talk, August 17, 2021, I stated the following in regards to various controversies swirling in school systems across the country. Pro-individual, pro-American, conservative voices need to be given an equitable voice and must be included in the process. Now, part of the historical reason these voices have been hard to find is that hard-working, responsible people don't have a lot of time to spend engaging in activism or protesting. They're too busy caring for and providing for their families. And apparently, all the corrupt USAID-linked NGO grants only funded radicals on one side of the political spectrum. I made a commitment to myself to treat these school board meetings as a personal priority, so I could speak up for the silent, responsibly working majority, as well as reach out to those on the other side to try to find a working respect for each other, if not actual common ground. While I'm sure at times I've been at least a little controversial, I've worked hard to be filled with love and compassion, even for those I've disagreed with. And in retrospect, given where we have arrived today, it has definitely been worth the ride. Dr. Mitch Young is a phenomenal bridge builder who balances the interests of both the central left and and the center-right. But he's unabashedly and proudly pro-American, and for that, I am incredibly grateful. The board considered my recommendation for him as superintendent back on January 16, 2024. I've never expected him to believe every single thing, I believe, but he's always been an attentive listener and has a track record of caring and competence I've been pleased to observe over the past four years. And the school board today, I believe, exemplifies the all-American virtues of personal responsibility, judging people on merit rather than superficial affinity groups, and building a culture that reduces resentment and increases gratitude. We truly have the right people with the right ideas at the right time to shake off the chaos of the recent culture wars and build a better school system for everyone. And so, my unexpected journey has led me from disagreeing with Dr. Young about whether or not to call them government schools or public schools, to a recent interaction where I found myself defending the district to a good, down-to-earth conservative friend from church, who knew someone working in the district during the height of the culture wars. This particular district teacher, from time to time, would worry that their statements of scientific fact to student questions like, there are only two sexes, would put them at risk of discipline. And they were sure that gobs of money were being wasted for DEI hires and programs unrelated to core student instruction. Their impression was not only was the superintendent woke, but the whole school board as well, and that our finances were allocated to wasteful ideological pursuits. Well, not being one to shy away from confrontation, I went into a whirlwind of corrections form. Yes, the district did once have a DEI program linked to anti-American, anti-individual, and anti-conservative groups, but this was slowly and surely eliminated after the toxic nature of those groups was exposed, despite well-funded leftist activist protests. And yes, there may have been some very compassionate previous board members who didn't quite recognize the deceptive nature of using benign words like diversity, equity, and inclusion to generate resentment and divisiveness, but today, we have an incredibly diverse board that understands equity is not equality, and inclusion has to include conservatives, too. Last but not least, while Larry Hamel might not have the most riveting portion of these school board meetings, after watching him 48 times give his detailed presentations of the budget, and observing both his integrity and transparency time and time again, I had plenty to say about how the school board has been managing our valuable taxpayer resources. While we should always be trying to increase the percentage of the budget going to instruction, 73% for 2026 is an impressive number in comparison to 58% to 65% from our surrounding school districts. And the ability for our district to plan and execute facility expansions without taking on more debt is frankly mind-boggling. After living in two deep-blue states, Hawaii and California, where they are completely unable to maintain any sort of fiscal discipline for anything, being in a state and county that takes its finances seriously is incredible. And so, in a little less than four years, I've gone from Forsyth County School District skeptic to a Forsyth County School District defender. I've been blessed to have been able to move to a free state after living for decades under a progressively repressive regime, and managed to land in arguably the best county in that free state. For all my dear friends on the left who believe I'm misguided, or malicious, or crass, or phobic in some way or another, I hope they can appreciate that none of the pendulum swing back to the center is motivated by vengeance. I truly believe the compassionate liberals among us are incredibly valuable for bringing up problems that conscientious conservatives might not notice. But once those problems are noticed, the best and most effective solutions will come from those conscientious conservatives, which is where we are today. We have a compassionate superintendent, a conscientious school board, and things look brighter in Forsyth County every day because of it. I want to thank our board and every single district employee, from Dr. Young down to the newest paraprofessional, for all the great work that they do. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time. And again, I'd love to buy lunch for anyone who disagrees with me.
Thanks, Jared. All right. That brings us to the end of the program tonight, so I'll seek a motion to adjourn. A motion by Mr. Usherwood, a second by Mr. Grimes, all in favor? Unanimous. Thanks, everyone, have a good night.